I'm glad you came.
Ms. Stu, would you call the roll, please?
Dave Burris.
Here.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Melanie Wilson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is the second council meeting. We've been using these new microphones. How are they working for you?
Awesome.
All right. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, please remember conflict of interest. If you have anything that you're uncomfortable voting on, please let the counsel know before. Need a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the March 7th meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 7th council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We need to make a motion or we need to amend the agenda tonight, so I apologize for not mentioning that right away. So before we get to the current claims, that's where we need to change the current claims. You were provided an invoice from Envirodyne. This is for the floating dual-deck steel digester cover that you folks have already approved. This got lost in our mail mayhem that we had. The city was having problems with our mail service. So this showed up just very recently. You've already approved it. It's just the invoice for the work that you've approved. So that would be an addition of $108,491 and on page eight of your current claims. Under Builders First Source, the $2,200 payment and the $4,100 payment and odd cents for $6,425.70. Those have already been paid, so that would be deducted. So the new balance for the current claims will be $167,463.74. Did I get that correct, Ms. Stu?
I have $173,880, $944, but that might be before the reduction.
Yes.
It looks about right.
Okay.
Yep. The yellow sticky that I got from this morning.
Oh, you took my sticky, that's right. That's why. You told him because I was like, you take it. Now I remember.
I'm out to drive.
This one?
Yeah, that one.
So that one's showing $167,463.74. So that will be your new total for current claims.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to...
We need to approve the bills in between.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and amend the agenda to include the current claims. New balance at $167,463.74.
Yes.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. So then a motion to approve the bills in between?
Make a motion for bills in between for $127,411.84.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Then a motion to approve an amended current claims of $167,463.74.
Like to make the motion to approve the current claims at $167,463.74.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Communications from the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the council? Don?
Mr. Mayor, counsel.
Name an address, please, for the record.
Say again?
Name an address for the record.
Donald L. Arkman. I live in Hot Springs, 27128 Wonderland Road.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. I know we're here tonight. One of the things we're gonna do is for the Vietnam veterans, and personally, I appreciate that. Appreciate it by me. But also, since it's the first council meeting since the VA made their announcement on the possible under closure again of our VA, I'd like to make a comment that I want you to all consider as you draw and put together this response from the city. There's one thing in common with the young veterans of today that you don't think about with us Vietnam veterans, and that is the government took aware of their victory and they made all their efforts worthless in the Middle East. Those young soldiers are gonna be coming, and they need a place to come to. They're gonna be suffering dearly as time goes on. And I understand, and all the Vietnam veterans here understand what that means, because they suffered that when they come back. We talk about all the stuff that happened, but that's important. So when you put together our response, and as we put the battle plans together to fight against this disclosure of our facility, keep that in mind that they're gonna have to have someplace to come, and this is the best place for them to come. So I'd just like to make that, so you have that information.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. My name is Carl Bockard, 1317 Sherman, and I'd like to...
Carl?
Yes.
I just want to give you a heads up that at 7:10, we do have a public hearing.
This'll be real quick.
We're at 7:07, so if you go long...
It's very brief.
Okay.
I just want to say I really appreciate the pay increase that you guys voted on at the last council. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Real quick. Kara Haggen, 2035 Spring Avenue. This might be a little long. I don't know if it'll carry over. This is regarding to, first, the ordinance, First Reading Ordinance 1241, an ordinance adopting a wayfaring program. Note, a change was made to remove E from Section 7202, resulting in a second first reading. So E is public or private destinations that serve to promote tourism. I would like to ask all of you to seriously reconsider that and go directly to the second reading of that. And the reason why is because I've been doing a little research, and this was from before, when I was on council. We got this manual on uniform traffic control device, and we have also in this section 22 or 2D50, community wayfaring signs. It says, "Community wayfaring guides signs are part of a coordinated and continuous system of signs that direct tourists and other road users to key civic, cultural, visitor, recreational attractions, and other destinations within a city or a local, urbanized, or downtown area." So tourism falls directly within that. Tourism is our biggest summertime guide. You know, people come here just for that specifically. It's also listed under title of municipal wayfaring signs in... I'm trying to find this section here. Municipal wayfaring sign programs, policy number DOT, OSOT 10.0. Same thing. So, secondly, there's three things. That was the first one. Most importantly, on the first item is we have, you know, some pretty big tourist attractions. I would say we all kind of know the top four or five that are in the community. Mamisite, Southern Hills Golf Course, Evans' Plunge, Moccasins Springs. I think those four come under the guidelines of items A through D anyway. And the other points I want to make about that is a lot of communities that you go to, they have wayfaring signs for camping, for lodging, for dining. I think that's important to have that. And I have a note in my packet, too, from back when we had a different city administrator. I'm sure maybe that information is still around. Some attractive downtown signage, Mueller Center with our branded colors, back from when Nolan was on the city administrator. You probably have that info. The signs were nice and attractive. I think Hot Springs deserves to have nice wayfaring, attractive signs throughout the community. And, secondly, the information that Hot Springs, you know, we as a community should really be tourism-based. I would like to see you guys really consider having that kind of as a forefront. I'm kind of losing my train of thought. I get nervous of public speaking. But if we could move forward and consider those items being listed, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kara.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go to our 7:10 public hearing. It's a public hearing for an alcoholic beverage license application from Southern Hills Mercantile LLC for a retail on-off sale wine and cider, and a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to be used at 445 North River Street. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to that?
Kara, 2035 Spring Avenue.
Mike Summer, 2035 Spring Avenue. I guess with this beer and wine license, it'll allow us to not only serve all of our kombucha that we make with Scobie Kombucha on tap. I'm also looking at developing and marketing a Mead product for the Renaissance Festival this summer, and I may even venture off into beer manufacturer as well as hard kombucha. So this will be an outlet for that, as well as featuring craft beers throughout the entire... from the entire West River area that we'll have on tap. So, go ahead.
So we're gonna be open year-round, and we'll be open... Close the first two weeks in January, but open January 15 through December. Two days PM, so when the coffee shops close, we'll be open. And we're gonna have 10 non-alcoholic kombuchas and Gen T on tap variations, so it's not just, you know, adding all taps, but we do... Would like to offer some nice wines, and we're focusing on South Dakota-made products. We're also gonna have food, small plates, and we're gonna carry Dakota seafood, as well as, you know, chubby chipmunk chocolates, everybody loves them, and Evergreen Ranch meats, and other focuses on, again, South Dakota-made. So we're gonna combine that in a nice little taproom package. We're gonna call it the Merc Taproom, and we have our kombucha there, which we're brewing away, and we would really appreciate your consideration on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Brett Gordon, 705 North River. As we have been canvassing the public to find out what types of beverages they would like to have at the Misty River Tavern, many of the people that have responded have asked for local brews, of which we're not gonna be able to carry that many, and if we do, it'll be in bottles versus on taps. So I think in terms of just the information that we've gotten from the public for the Misty River Tavern, it is very complimentary to what Kara and Mike are doing at the Mercantile. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uriah Lowell, 2244 Minicotta. Will we have a chance to speak on the ordinance, 1241?
This is the public hearing for the liquor license.
Excuse me?
This is the public hearing for the liquor license.
I know, but it was public hearing before I could get up. It was closed.
Oh, we're not...
No, no, no.
We'll go back to it.
No.
We'll go back.
We'll go back, okay.
Yes. Anyone else that would like to speak to the liquor application?
Hi, I'm Carrie Light, 843 North 24th Street, and I'm also a new business owner in town, Diamond Automotive. I just really want to speak to this because, like Misty River, I have feelings of great joy when I think about these nice establishments. I feel like even just my own family, which I know will be coming from all across the country, we've got seven grown kids and our 13th grandkid on the way. But when I talk to them about our area and the things that we offer here, you know, there's so much to see and do, but there's gotta be enough places for them to eat and drink and recreate in that kind of way, too. And that's what they want. So I just have to kind of chime in on the liquor license, because I've been watching what they're doing, what they're making, what their plans are, and I love them. So I just wanted to give a thumbs up for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Close the public hearing, counsel. Do you have any questions?
No.
All right. Let's close the public hearing at 7:17. I need a motion to approve, deny, or table.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage license application from Southern Hills Mercantile LLC for retail on-off sale wine and cider and a retail on-off sale malt liquor... Or, excuse me, malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to be used at 445 North River Street.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Stu, would you call the roll, please?
Melanie Wilson.
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
David Burris.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. All right. So that takes us to our proclamation for tonight. Communications. Sorry, Uriah. Promise you'd come back. Yes. I'm anxious to get this next one, but we need to listen to what you have to say.
All right. Uriah Lowell, 2244 Minicotta. I would like to speak in regards to the second hearing of ordinance 1241. Upon reading the ordinance, it is not the place of government to pick winners and losers. It's not appropriate for government to advertise for private entities only for the government itself. Section A of that ordinance is the only one, I think, that requires that they use the wayfinding program for government institutions that are owned or operated by the government. Any of those clauses which indicate it would be used for a private entity, I think, are inappropriate. The reason for this is it's very subjective. First of all, there's this clause in the Constitution called equal treatment under the law. You can't just promote some businesses and not all the businesses. It's either all or none. And then when the... And then the ordinance itself, it determines, well, if it has historical or geographical significance. Well, that's a very subjective thing, and who gets to decide if your business has historical or geographical significance? So therefore, it creates problems. I think you should rescind or not even finish the entire thing and reject the ordinance in its entirety, because it is inappropriate as a government to use taxpayer funds to provide signage for private businesses and entities. So I hope you'll think about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Anybody else from the public that would like to address the council? All right. Then we'll move on to our proclamation. Charity? Where are you at? Thank you. Charity approached Jeff and I a while back and asked if we would be on board with the proclamation that we'll be reading to you tonight, and I jumped at the opportunity to be able to do that. So thank you for bringing us the opportunity. Webb? Are you here? All right. My understanding is that after we read the proclamation, I'll be handing that off to you. How many Vietnam veterans do we have in the audience tonight? Would you come down to the front if you're able, and as a group, hear what this proclamation is about? So I think it says a lot that you receive it as a group.
You want them up on stage or down?
It's a great turnout.
Probably have more up, more than you think, so...
Man, I love our town.
You generally make a hole for the guy there. Thank you.
Larry? Are you gonna get in the group?
No, sir. I wasn't on Vietnam.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. You ready? I'll do my best to get through this. Office of the Mayor, Hot Springs, South Dakota. Proclamation, Welcome Home Veteran, Vietnam Veterans Day. Whereas, the United States became involved in the Vietnam War because policymakers in the United States believed that if South Vietnam fell to a communist government, then communism would spread throughout the rest of Southeast Asia. And whereas, the Vietnam War was fought from 1961 to 1975 and involved North Vietnam and the Viet Cong in conflict with the United States and South Vietnam Armed Forces. And whereas, members of the United States Armed Forces began serving in an advisory role in South Vietnam in 1961. And whereas, as a result of incidents in the Gulf of Tonkin on August 2 and August 4, 1964, Congress overwhelmingly passed the Gulf of Tonkin Resolution on August 7, 1964, which effectively handed over war-making powers to President Johnson until such times as peace and security had returned to Vietnam. And whereas, in 1965, United States Armed Forces ground combat units arrived in Vietnam. And whereas, by the end of 1965, there were 80,000 United States troops in Vietnam, and by 1969, a peak of approximately 543,000 troops was reached. And whereas, on January 27, 1973, the Paris Peace Accords were signed, which required the release of all United States prisoners of war held in Vietnam, and the withdrawal of all United States Armed Forces from South Vietnam. And whereas, on March 29, 1973, the United States Armed Forces began the withdrawal of combat troops from Vietnam. And whereas, the end of the Vietnam War was marked by the fall of Saigon by the North Vietnamese Army on April 30, 1975. And whereas, more than 58,000 members of the United States Armed Forces lost their lives in Vietnam, and more than 300,000 members of the Armed Forces were wounded. And whereas, in 1982, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial was dedicated in the District of Columbia to commemorate those members of the United States Armed Forces who died or were declared missing in action in Vietnam. And whereas, members of the United States Armed Forces who served bravely and faithfully for the United States during the Vietnam War were caught upon their return home in the crossfire of public debate about the involvement of the United States in the Vietnam War. And whereas, it was also the first time in history America failed to welcome its veterans back as heroes. And whereas, the establishment of a Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day would be an appropriate way to honor those members of the United States Armed Forces who served in Vietnam during the Vietnam War. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Hot Springs City Council do hereby recognize March 29, 2022, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. The Hot Springs City Council further honors and recognizes the contributions of veterans of the Armed Forces who served in Vietnam. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the City of Hot Springs, South Dakota, this 21st day of March in our year of the Lord, 2022. Webb, where to go to?
Right here. God bless America.
Gentlemen, if there's anything you'd like to say, the night's yours.
Thank you, folks.
You're welcome, sir.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
This gentleman in the back.
Yes.
He's just waving at him.
Somebody have a question.
I don't know. He's just saluting them, I think. Oh, okay.
Sit down. Last one walked out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job, Mayor. All right. Move to the first set of personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through J?
Make a motion, excuse me. Make a motion for Personnel to accept. Excuse me, folks. Make a, make a motion for Personnel from A through J.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Our second set of Personnel Actions, Personnel Action to Approve the $1 An Hour Increase Approved, March 7, 2023. Personnel Actions A through Double M.
Make a motion to approve the $1 Increase Approved on March 7, 2022. Actions A through Double M.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. All right. Onto our first ordinance. This is an amendment to a first reading of Ordinance 1241, an ordinance adopting a wayfinding sign program. And in your info side of the packet, I provided you some locations that had been identified back in 2016. As Kara had spoken to, this originally got started back in 2016. I think it may have even been a little earlier than that. This is information that our previous city administrator, John Gregory, had provided me as part of a packet for the wayfinding signs. And I just wanted to give it to you so you could take a look at it and see the locations that were being suggested at the time that this was first being talked about. The other thing that John told Jeff and I as we met with him is when you look at this, each of them are grouped in three. And the reason behind that came from the state. The state feels that a group of three is a good size. If you get much more than that on signs, then people are going to start slowing down and they're going to try to read the whole sign. So the grouping is three, recommended from the state. I'm asking you to make the change in eliminating the last one that refers to public and private destinations that promote tourism. And that one is particularly different from the other three or the other four that are on there. To me, we, that puts us in a situation of going down a rabbit hole. Which public or private business promotes tourism better than anybody else? And I just feel that we could get caught in that and it would be up to the council to decide whose business deserves to be promoted above the others. So that's the reason I'm asking to have that particular one removed. Uriah spoke it a little bit. He's asking for you to even remove more than that and make sure that it's just municipals, municipal locations that are included. I think the others give us some flexibility in acknowledging other locations that are around Hot Springs also that are uniquely historic to Hot Springs. I'm certainly open to the discussion when it comes to the VA and the State Veterans Home. But I would push back pretty hard to eliminate those also. That's the reason I'm asking for that particular language to be struck. So the motion is in front of you.
I'll make a motion to approve a first reading of Ordinance 1241, an ordinance adopting a wayfinding program. Note, a change was made to remove E from Section 72.02, resulting in a second first reading.
Second. Discussion.
I have several questions. You know, we are a tourist town and people are always trying to figure out where to find things. And so, and that is what wayfaring signs are for. I don't want to go down the rabbit hole of putting everything on those signs. But there are a lot of things that do promote the tourism and they promote people to stay in our area. And if we could simply, if we could generically even reference like lodging, camping, swimming in specific directions to get them to go there. And I know I'm asked lots of times, where are the springs that we can soak in or swim in? And of course, we have the Evans Plunge covered, but in the list, we have Kidney Springs. But we also have Moccasin Springs, which is a huge draw to our city. And it brings a lot of people for weekend stays specific to enjoy our hot springs. And I, I think the income that the city is gaining from those places that serve the lodging or the camping to keep those people here to take and stay, give us their business in the evenings to these new places that are opening up and offering entertainment in the evening. And I think we need to help people find those places. So if we need to make them generic, like swimming, camping, fishing this way or Moccasin Springs right next to Kidney Springs because they're up the same road. And there's other places that I think we need some changes in what's been listed. Is there a committee that's been, going over this list again? Or is it just you? Or who's making this decision? I'd like to know and be a part of the discussion. Because there's only one place where the hospital is being directed and it should be directed from the other direction as well. And it's not on the list that we were given. And also, to what I have seen, the signs that are being, that I was shown are pretty darn ugly. And I would think that the Historic Preservation Commission should have a say since in our historic district, we should have something a little more ornate. I know it's money. It's going to cost money. Maybe we could do fundraisers for the difference. I don't know. But I think it's something that we should at least check what the difference in cost is. Because they are pretty bland, little rectangle, long signs that are just, they don't promote what we are trying to create in our downtown area. So those are all of my issues.
So let me, don't, don't let me forget about what the signs would look like. The first question to ask is who's been putting this together? And recognizing that as the road reconstruction project is getting started, for us to have wayfinding signs, we need to have an ordinance. That's the state requirement. So I plagiarized Rapid City's ordinance to get us 99% of the way there. So that's the reason that the ordinance is in front of you the way that it is. And as we began discussing E, public or private destinations that serve to promote tourism, that's the reason that I put, brought it back in front of you for discussion. So we can have more discussions about, you know, what locations you feel are the right ones to have there. As far as the signs themselves, when you say the ones that you've seen, Deborah, are those the ones that I had shown in a Public Works Meeting possibly or Public Safety? There's more than just that. And I agree with you, the ones that we looked at initially certainly aren't the kind of signs we would like in Hot Springs. But there are much better signs out there that are available that have our logo on the top of them. And there's more colors to them. So that's all the details, you know, that would need to be worked out. But at this point, it's the ordinance itself that we have to get approved so that we can go to the city, to the state with an application of what we want and where we want them. And then, you know, once we've figured out what it is that we want. But if, if council feels that, you know, this still needs to be worked on, I understand that. The rabbit hole that I'm talking about is, you mentioned Kidney Springs. You mentioned Moccasin Springs. Kidney Springs is municipal. Moccasin Springs is private. And that's the rabbit hole that I'm concerned going down is where we begin advertising for a business at taxpayers' dollars.
It's also a naturally occurring phenomenon here in this town that is open for the tourists to come.
That's the rabbit hole. So again, that's.
It is historic, the site.
It fits three of the other criteria, A through D. Moccasin Springs does.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree that it could.
So if you want to talk about being fair, I'm just stating that it fits three of the other four, A through D criteria.
And for me, it still fits. It's private business versus not.
Well, the others say private and public.
So.
So what you're saying, Deb, is that based on your premises, that we have to list every single spring in this town because it's a natural phenomenon and it's part of the history? That's what I'm, I'm taking.
No, I'm saying that ones that are open.
That's what I'm taking from your comment.
No, the ones that would be available for tourists and public.
Give her a chance to answer a question, please.
I'm saying that the ones that are open to the public and tourists and are a tourist draw should be listed, not everyone.
Okay, I understand that. I wasn't through when you interjected, but I will go from there. But I'm just saying, based on your premises, that when you asked where all the natural springs are in this town, so based on that ideology you're saying, and we'd have to list every place that's in here also based upon what the mayor's reading here.
I'd like to add, the name of the town is Hot Springs. And Moccasin Springs has the only hot springs in the community. And we're bringing in a lot of tax dollars. We're right up there with those top four that I mentioned.
I appreciate that, Kara. My, I have a couple of concerns with leaving E in the ordinance is, one, it's fine right now if we would include someone like Moccasin Springs. But if, if, if Moccasin Springs would change hands and it would all of a sudden become a very unsavory place to visit, would we want to advertise it? The other thing is, we have, we have some general things listed here. And I haven't been a part of compiling this list, so I don't have any ownership with it. But it, it helps people find the things that they might not normally find. I think we have to be careful that we don't try to become an internet search engine using street signs. We've got about $30,000 we're going to spend on, on wayfinding signage. And I think to have a, a limited scope that gets the folks in town, gets, allows them to be around the main areas and then they can find the privately owned businesses that are nearby with the search engines that are out there, I think we will accomplish what we need to accomplish.
Well, we have Wind Cave on our list, but we don't have Coldbrook on our list. And that has camping that would keep people here. And it would keep them, they have to come through town to get there and come back through town to get out of there. That's another place that I think, you know, it's wayfinding under the camping, fishing, swimming option could be generic. And they would so happen past Hidden Lake, which is another historic area to the area. And, and it is a scenic, beautiful place. And it does offer a service to the city. Those would all be encompassed in one sign if you put camping, swimming, and fishing there at the corner by Evans Plunge. And then again, on the intersection down by Big Bats and Dairy Queen, RV, or camp, or again, the camping. And we have a sign for an RV dump. We should have camps, signs for the RV camps, you know. But those are places that are going to draw people to go to our golf course and go to the Evans Plunge and to spend time at all of our motels. And if you're driving down the interstate, you have the big signs that have the lodging, the gas, the food. So we should direct them to those things as well.
And those, those interstate signs that shows to you that such and such a restaurant is .7 miles this way and that? I'm not sure, but I think those run about $2,500 per advertised business.
So the businesses pay for those?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question more than anything else? My understanding is the details of which signs go where don't have to be identified in the submission to the state. Is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, the locations do.
But the ordinance.
But the ordinance doesn't need to, doesn't need to address. So that's my, my point is perhaps this needs to be worked in a, in a, in a working group a little better, a little further. But let's get the ordinance through so we can get it submitted to the state is what we need to do.
My intent in providing the list is not that it's exclusive to this, but the types of locations that were being looked at when wayfinding signs were originally being discussed. Not that this is it. If you're not on the list, you don't make the cut. But to help understand, looking at the list, why I think that E should be removed from the list. Kara is making a point that she feels that Moccasin Springs would still fit one of the other four categories. I still worry about a private business and so.
But it does say privately owned on three of those.
I, I, I agree. To your point about, the, the other thing that John had provided to us was that ISG, the folks that have designed our suspended sidewalk, provide this same kind of service. So once we decide what locations we want and where we want them, I think the best thing for us to do would be to hire ISG. We don't have the experts, in my opinion, to get this figured out. They do this for a living. Submit our ideas to them. Submit what we would like to start with as far as some signs and some logos. But let them do what they did for us as far as the suspended sidewalk. Let them put together top-notch signs for us. But we do need to get this ordinance approved so that we can take the next step.
We have someone in the mic.
So at this point, council, do you have any other questions? That's where we're at as far as the discussion within council.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
I'm, I'm not looking to exclude you, but right now, this is an opportunity for council to ask questions of each other, so. Counsel, do you have any other questions of each other?
The only, the only concern, I guess I really have is, I don't have a problem with having wayfinding signs to direct people where to go for our community. But there are a lot of businesses in this town. Somebody's going to get hurt or feel hurt or left out.
Right.
If we go down that rabbit hole.
...if we go down that rabbit hole. So I'm afraid that, yeah, we do want to do the right thing, don't get me wrong, but we start listing a few select businesses, we're going to have somebody's feelings hurt and get mad, maybe even a lawsuit. So I'm just saying, we really need to think about that.
And one final comment before I give you the opportunity to speak. The other thing that John had suggested was to put up a big sign in Centennial Park itself. That would be identifying other locations or other potentially businesses within Hot Springs. If we can get them to Centennial Park, which is on the list, then have something much bigger there that would direct them to other locations in the city. Yes, ma'am?
Carrie Light, 843 North 24th Street. Maybe rhetorical questions, but one of the things I'm wondering is, are we going to have on this sign, it's hard for me to kind of envision it, but you're talking about how there are more than three is too many, which I agree when you're trying to read something. But are attractions going to be listed in that? Another question I have is, is there some kind of a list that we, as a public, can look at and maybe contribute thoughts to? You know, for example, as a traveler, I want to know where the KOA is, right? And if I'm new to town, which I was just last year, coming here to buy a home, I mean, if everything's topsy-turvy, it might be hard, and Google doesn't keep up, you know, Apple Maps doesn't keep up. The other thing that I wondered is, I definitely see the rabbit hole situation, definitely. But I'm wondering, do we really need to completely remove E? Because the question I have is, regardless, doesn't each sign have to still then be the wayfinding? Like, if you were to say, these are the five criteria, A through E, right, upon approval, you know, instead of it just being a rabbit hole, an unconditional rabbit hole, maybe, because like with Moccasin Springs, for example, or the KOA, and again, without knowing what's on there. I, as, you know, when I researched, and when I did research for this town, there were things that came up. It was, you know, one of the top 10 destinations, and these were things that weren't being propagated by Chamber of Commerce or the city themselves. So I'm just saying, entities, South Dakota and otherwise, where they were saying, you know, these are the attractions for tourism. I have a business, it is going to promote tourism, but it doesn't have any kind of like natural thing to it, right? I'm just going to be like, yay, Hot Springs, yay, you know, Black Hills, whatever. But as far as even just the people that I know that I've been talking about, come here, come here, before I even knew there was a road project, I want them to be able to see when they're coming into town, even if you just did on one part of it, I know you don't want it to be like an online kind of thing, right? But you could even, at the end of the day, if you couldn't pick and choose, you could do attractions online at something, just so that some of the main attractions that we have in town, like Evans Plunge and Mammoth Site and KOA and Moccasin Springs, these are all not just public entities, and I'm sure I'm forgetting about some, but even having those highlighted in some kind of way will bring business to some of the other locations that may be affected by the tourists or by the roads, but that also promote tourism, but don't necessarily have like natural things like the hot springs or whatever. But that's all I really want to...
So to answer your question as far as what I believe you're asking, has the public been involved in this? No, they haven't. Well, I don't know how much of the public was involved in the list that came up in 2016. Again, I'm just trying to get an ordinance...
Yeah.
...approved by council that we can get, you know, some direction going.
Well, you talked about Rapid City going through 99% or whatever, which is super smart, except for how different are we than they, right? So...
So, to keep the conversation going, it looks like there's some other folks that want to weigh in on this also.
Yeah, and I basically, thank you so much, got to say what was really on my heart about it.
Okay. I have a comment. I think over here at the RV dump station, just to the south of us here, that they have a board there that I think they were supposed to be putting up pamphlets from various businesses to let people know that use that dump station, of the areas in town or businesses in town. And the mayor mentioned something about putting a similar board up at Centennial Park, which is a central location here in town. And as far as compiling the list that we have here, I would think that we would have to, with the businesses and such, that we would have to look at profit businesses versus nonprofit entities.
Yeah, I mean, like she said, she's, they've contributed a lot of taxes, but I think just the main thing is, is if you go to a place like Centennial Park or wherever else, you have to physically stop, get out for whatever reason might take you to that spot, and then find that location. I think that there's some things that we offer here in Hot Springs that are nationally known, and people are going to come here looking for them. And because everything's going to be crazy unless we have wayfinding signs that either say, these are our main attractions, you know, look at this one-page website, you could put it on the city website or whatever, but just to, rather than just strike it completely from the verbiage and to keep it from going down a rabbit hole, and also in honor of what the gentleman earlier was saying, how it's got to be fair, which I totally get. I think that's so smart. But at the same time, I just know that from tourist promotion perspective, which we need, we need that tourism to come to town. And we don't want people to come here and leave and be like, oh my gosh, I went there to Hot Springs, I couldn't find any of the hot springs, you know what I mean? So I mean, that's the worst-case scenario, but I just feel like, rather than just strike it, because that does have some things that really do make sense to it, I just kind of wanted to throw in some other thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thank you so much.
Okay, I really need to ask that we keep this short. I realize it's unfair that they may have gotten more time, but...
I can be quick.
All right, thank you.
Patrick Wise, 602 Sulphur Springs. You know, being new to town, I think this is one of the most incredible places in the world. I've lived in New York, Hawaii, India, Mexico, and I chose to be here, and there's a reason for it, because it's a special, special place. And working in the front desk at America's Best In, bartending at Woolies, you talk to people, you talk to the tourists. Nine out of 10 of them came here to be at Moccasin Springs or Evans Plunge. And as a new business owner, I'm not going to be offended if my bar is not on a sign, but I think that there's certain businesses, Evans Plunge, Mammoth Site, Moccasin Springs, and the golf course, that should obviously be there. And to me, I'm going to, as a business owner, I'm going to do everything that I can to make our place a place where people come from all over the Southern Hills, but I don't expect to be on a sign. But those types of businesses, I think it's a no-brainer. And when you go down River Street at night, it's dark, so we got to do something different, and maybe this is a piece of it, that's it. But I think we should promote the ones that are bringing in the majority of the business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Brett Gordon, 705 North River. We have a visitor center for a reason. Use the visitor center to promote the businesses and so forth. Create a map that can actually generate income for the city by businesses advertising on a map that is attractive to the area. And promote the visitor center, which is highly underutilized from what I've seen so far, and use generic descriptions of the attractions that we have. Being a part of the military, the BX on the bases have to raise their price to include essentially the taxes in order to avoid competing with private industry outside the gate. So let's just focus on the generic aspects of what we have here in the town, focus people to the visitor center or to other places that will have these maps, use the maps to generate income, and then people can find anything that they want, and businesses get a chance to promote and pay for the advertising. That's my thought. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Luke, you were headed this way?
I was just going to say, Luke Broyles, 145 North 23rd. I was just going to say, striking it completely, I think, is kind of not being business-friendly. Like, if you don't want certain businesses, that's one thing, but to just say none of them is kind of unilateral, I don't really think it's fair, like, like Carrie was saying, you know, certain attractions should definitely be on there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
The attorney has to weigh in.
Yeah. Earl and Golf, Attorney for the City. Just want to make a comment, you know, most of the arguments that I hear are just basically promoting private business versus government-owned entities. You know, one of the jobs us attorneys do is make arguments. I could probably argue to get 90% of every business in town on that list of B through D. So I just wanted to make, I don't have an opinion either way, but just make a comment, if that's what you're worried about, private business versus public-owned entities, you should probably just strike B through E completely, and just keep A. I'm just making that comment.
That's not bad. Not bad at all.
I disagree.
All right.
I'd go for that.
Based on city attorney's recommendation, Misty?
Well... Comment.
I like recommendation, comment. Misty, who made the motion?
I did.
Lukin, seconded by Burris.
All right. Is the maker of the motion willing to amend it, or does he like it the way he made it?
I think I like it the way I made it.
All right. Okay, any other questions? So we're talking about an ordinance. My cheat sheet says we need to make sure we have a roll call, so Misty?
I'm going to be more fair to Linda than I was to Melanie. We are rotating the...
I was getting used to being number one.
Oh, wow. Now you're messing me all up.
Linda, you're going to be next first up, so...
Oh, no.
Linda, approve the first reading of the ordinance.
Has Bill read it, made the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Craig?
So...
No, go ahead. Clarify what we're voting on, is that what you wanted to do?
Do you want to ask your question?
Yeah, I want clarification on E, on dropping E, what that would entail to our speakers that came to the microphone tonight. What does that mean to them?
The question you had put to me is whether it would eliminate Moccasin Springs, and the argument could be made that, yes or no, depending on how you want to interpret it. I believe she, Moccasin Springs could potentially fit under public or privately owned historic, cultural, scientific, educational, or religious sites, or private, public or privately owned natural phenomenon. Am I misstating?
Head on for revision?
Yeah.
Yes. You're correct, Paul, that's what she said.
So that's still potentially that rabbit hole that we're talking about?
Mm-hmm, that's why I think...
But the rabbit hole is not for council to decide on this ordinance. That rabbit hole can be decided by working with...
That's, all we're trying to do is get something down and voted for so we can get started.
Yes.
The arguments that we're having right now is just basically a waste of time because we haven't even had, we don't even have anything in play. That argument could come up later on with more, more business owners and citizens to have their two cents put into.
All right. Anything else, Jair?
No, thank you.
All right. All right. Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, I'm going to start again, Linda.
Has, the motion was by Bill, yes.
Okay. And Craig?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Thank you. Deborah?
Yes.
JR?
Reluctant, yes.
Dave Burris?
Yes.
And Melanie Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think we need a lot of work on a committee.
Yep, I agree. I agree.
All right, the motion passes.
Yep.
Thank you, council, thank you, public.
It is, the ordinance, the first reading passed.
It's the first reading.
So have a second reading of the ordinance.
First reading. All right, on to our resolution, Resolution 2022-8, Resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-8 to amend the citywide fee resolution to add an airport hangar lease rental charge of 35 cents per square foot for commercial activities and to increase the library...
Interlibrary loan.
Interlibrary loan charge to $4 per recommendation of the library board.
Second. Discussion.
Is this the same rate we charge airplanes?
No, that's 12 or 15 cents.
It actually comes out really close. If you put the number of airplanes in where this space will go, the commercial lease is actually greater than what you could get for putting three airplanes there.
This would be $697.20 a month.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. On to new business, new business item A, a possible motion discussion to authorize the city attorney to move forward with an execution of judgments.
I make a motion to authorize the city attorney to move forward with an execution of judgment for case number 20-0006 related to the demolition of the Community Action Building.
Garland? Would you give the council a, hold on, description of what we're talking about here, please?
I don't know the exact date, but many years ago, we, the city demolished a building known as the Community Action Building. It was located in the lot next to City Hall. As part of that demolition, it was kind of like the West Elka Building in that we declared it a nuisance and demolished it. Part of that judgment is we recouped the cost as part of a judgment against Hot Springs citizens for progress. They owe us the money for demolition, demolishing the building. We've recouped some of that money by basically handing a court order to sell property that they've owned. Currently, there's another property in Custer County that I'm wanting to go after, so by approving this, you allow me to go after that property and try to recoup the city some money.
Is there anybody currently living in the property?
To my li, to my knowledge, no. It's an empty building.
Counsel, any questions?
No, it's cut and dry.
Thanks, Garland.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Garland.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item, new business item B, possible motion discussion to approve a lease agreement with Southern Hills Aviation.
Make a motion to approve a lease agreement with Southern Hills Aviation for the use of 1,992 square feet of space in the city-owned heated hangar, B1, for commercial repair operations. Second.
Bill, would you give us a little rundown of what Airport Advisory has been kicking around here, please?
Yeah, some folks, this is actually the second group that have approached the airport manager and want to open up a business here in Hot Springs to do maintenance on essentially single-engine aircraft. I believe...
Uh, I believe their long-term goal, once the business is established, is I think, and I'm looking at Rick to, let me see if I say anything incorrect, ultimately, I think they would like to lease land from us in our commercial area designated as commercial area under the Airport Improvement Plan and build their own hangar and repair facility. This will get them started. The airport manager has reviewed the available space and what you see on your drawing is essentially the southern portion of the hangar that would be utilized for doing things such as annual maintenance and inspections on aircraft. They also intend to put in a portable paint spray booth, which has caused some concern over with other hangar tenants because of potential overspray. And that's why we put in the contract that any time that booth is in operation, it will be vented to the outside, operated under a negative pressure, filtered so that there will be zero particulates and zero vapors discharged into the hangar, so there'll be no overspray potential for the other aircraft stored in the hangar, and that the filter system will be such that there will be zero particulates discharged to the atmosphere so we won't be, uh, having any potential overspray or impact on any of the other buildings. So, uh, I appreciate Rick's been working with these folks for several months and after all that work, we find ourselves here.
I appreciate you being here and my name is, for those that don't know me, I am Rick Breitenbach. I am the airport manager and I also live at 1701 Hot 18 Bypass. I wanted to come here just to give you a scope of what their work is. Their scope of work will be, if you look at that picture in the hangar, I think it's, I counted the pages, it was like 40. It looks like this. And the, it's going to be a portable area in the hangar so that the airplanes, I've moved all the airplanes to the other side. We have not compromised any storage fees for what we have right now. This area that's the 83 feet will be on portable tables. Their scope of work is actually aircraft parts, like repairing, like a wood spar on an airplane or fixing airframe pieces. Also, we want a company, like Bill said, to perform maintenance on the aircraft that we can continue instead of somebody having to leave Hot Springs and get their airplane inspected. The bare minimum requirement for a commercial, let's say a certified aircraft, like a Cessna or a Beechcraft or a Piper, is to have what's called an annual inspection that's done once a year where you take the airplane apart, inspect all of the functional pieces of the plane, and put it back together, and it requires a certain level of maintenance and maintenance authorization and that's considered an inspector authorization. These people will have that within their scope of work here to do that for our community, for the people that have their airplanes here, and their core business of fixing airplanes. So to me, it is a win-win of what we're bringing here to, to the city of Hot Springs. And this is just a temporary goal to stay in the city hangar. It's not something we want them to be there all the time, years down the road. They do want to build a hangar. They want to test their business to see their viability. And the ability to get a loan to build a hangar, they need to prove the sustenance of their business and they really want to start this spring. Now, there is a little delay. They're having troubles with getting SBA to give them their licensing. They're busy, so they're, keep getting pushed back and the long pole is not them. It's basically SBA, but it won't change anything for the lease. I wanted to come here to answer any questions you may have regarding their business. I also took the initiative today to contact everybody that has an airplane in that city hangar, to give them an update of where we are, what our plans are, and basically get their verbal approval to go forward. Because we don't want to, we don't wanna upset our current customers. They have airplanes that cost, you know, several thousand dollars. One of them in there is probably, he paid like 40, $50,000 for his paint shop. You know, we don't want to mess up their airplanes. And I've contacted each of these owners, excuse me, I contacted each of these owners to get their verbal approval for us to go forward with this because they also see it as a goal for our airport and for our community to bring in a maintenance business. It's their step to say, yeah, we will allow this to happen. We won't push back because we know it's for the benefit of the community and to build our airport. So...
One question, Rick.
Yes.
What's an annual cost on a Cessna? I know, I've got a number in mind, but I thought you might have a more current number.
It, it could be anywhere from $1,500 to five grand, depending on what you do.
And that's all part of the sales tax base?
Yeah. I will say that if you want to have a small fortune, start with a large fortune and buy an airplane.
Same with the boat.
Yeah, same with the boat. I've been in aircraft maintenance for over 40 years and I look at these two people, Ray and John, and they're honorable people. They have a strong desire to be here. They want this business to go and I honestly support them and the guy's not able to be here tonight because he actually teaches students for A and P license to be an aircraft mechanic, so he's actually teaching class, so...
So how long did they, um, this is gonna be a temporary thing till they can get them a hangar and SBA cooperates and all the chips fall into place. Did they give you any idea how long they would expect to be there before, so they would know when their business is viable or will be viable?
They would like to look at a year and then come back in a year to say, will the bank give them a loan? Will they be able to build a hangar? You know, these are all part of the, you know, they have to prove the viability of their business to a bank and I think that's all something that we can prove this year. And I think we also worked out a very fair cost for them to be here. I think that's also in this proposal of, uh, 35, what's it, 35?
35 per square foot.
Yeah, 35 per square foot.
Basically, it's a test drive so they can see if they can get it off the ground. No pun intended.
And I, and I, I agree with that. That is, that is, it is a real true statement. It is a, will their business fly? Let's just say it.
Oh, you two are great.
Have to go in like a team effort here.
Yeah, there we go.
Team comedy.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
This portable paint booth, you said it's gonna be vented outside?
Yeah, we have to remember the, the paint booth is, if you're gonna fix a part, you're gonna have to maybe put a top coat of something on it, like when they fixed a wing. They, they put it in there and they did. It's not like their whole business is painting and they're gonna be painting every day. I would say painting is the final touch of finishing a job. And this paint booth is an actual inflatable, EPA-approved booth that's self-contained. And they've also mentioned that if they, they would even cover other airplanes that are in the hangar. If that was a request of them, they would make sure that nothing would ever happen to an aircraft.
The question I was getting at, if it's vented outside, do we have to cut a hole inside of our hangar or something?
No, we're going to use the actual back door. In the picture of, of the hangar, the front part is the closet. There's actually a back door here. The painting would be in the very back corner and then it would vent out the back door into the grass area. And all the airplanes would be clear on the other side of the hangar.
Okay, the second question is, is there room for the seat plane if we have to have it out there this summer?
The fire plane?
We haven't had the, I, I know I'm new to this position, but we haven't had a fire plane in a hangar since I've been there.
That hang was built just for that.
Well, it was...
The money.
It was, the seat planes were used to justify the building of it. They are not required to be in that hangar.
We, right now, I have, the space in the hangar is the full, one side of the hangar has airplanes. The center of the hangar is for transients to come in and we have an aircraft that's called the TBM. It is a turboprop. It's the largest airplane probably on the field. He comes in and goes. I haven't seen him since summer, but he has first dibs on the, on the hangar and I get him in the middle. He's a $4 million airplane. And we have room to put airplanes in the middle of the hangar and I'm, I can't remember what type of airplane would be the, the fire airplanes. It's a turboprop, is it not?
Yeah.
It's turboprop. And the other thing as well is that this operation is portable. I mean, we're, in a situation like that, we can also clear out if we had to. They can push things against the wall and make room, so...
Yeah, we're not gonna put up any walls. We're gonna have just tables. I need to be able to move airplanes around in the hangar and that means that you need space to jockey things around and, and move them into place. We didn't lose any tenants. We had one already sold and moved on. We haven't forced anybody out and I'm actually made more room so that we can have transients come into the, to the hangar as needed. And they also mentioned that they would definitely be working with us if we had like bad weather and we needed to get, like people came in and we needed to fill the hangar, we could, they could move their equipment so we could put more airplanes into that hangar. We could probably put three down the middle at the most. I actually put airplanes into the unheated hangar. We have two hangars and that unheated hangar is actually full. They charge less, so a lot of these pilots that are fair weather pilots, their planes are in that unheated hangar. So we made space.
All right.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Counsel, any other questions?
So you're gonna, you're gonna do this, right, on the, on whatever you're spray painting, right? Correct?
What? He's not gonna...
You know what I'm saying? You said you're, you're spray painting or you're gonna be painting?
No, they're spray painting.
Spray paint, right?
If they do, they spray in the booth.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's a spray, yes.
Spray paint, right?
Yes. It's a spray paint booth.
Okay, but what kind of system do you have set up for the back door to suck this stuff out? Because if you got other airplanes in there, I'm just concerned about fallout. That's just, I mean, that's the reality.
The, the booth is a, it, it's pretty amazing when you look at the science of this, but it is a self-contained inflatable booth and it's to paint parts. We're not looking at painting an aircraft. We're like, we're like painting a car.
There's an exhaust hose that goes out the back.
Right.
And it runs out the door. That's what, that's what it is. It's about a 10-inch diameter.
That's kinda, kinda figured out what you were saying. I just wanted to hear what you had to say.
Yeah, it, it is not like we're gonna be painting an aircraft. That requires a very sophisticated dropdown booth with all kinds of things that you need a separate hangar for just painting. We're, we're talking about painting a, a part.
And all I was concerned about was just if there was gonna be any fallout.
I, I don't, I don't think so. We've really dug deep into this and we've had many discussions. I have with Ray to go over this and even brought in other pilots that have an airplane in the hangar that have a maintenance background and we believe that we have done our due diligence to protect the aircraft. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
I, I have a, I had a business I was partners in with, uh, Paint and Automotive and what, what Larry, I think, was trying to figure out is the booth that you were talking about, we have two of those and basically they're collapsible. It's like a, the best way for me to put it is a glorified bouncy house.
Yeah, it kinda is that, yeah.
Okay. And for what you were concerned with, Larry, is a completely different type system. When you go to paint airplanes and high-dollar cars, you have electrolysis or a system that goes with it, so actually you magnetize the metal and vapor, so it sucks right into it and he's not going anywhere near that. So...
That's correct. Thank you for the clarification, Dave.
Yeah, not a problem.
Thank you for all your efforts towards this project.
I'm very excited for the opportunities here at Hot Springs.
Excellent.
And thank you for letting me be here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. One more time. Anything else, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item C, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a 12-month agreement. Jeff, I believe this one's yours.
This is a real simple opt-in texting situat, or program that we're gonna put out at the golf course. We're gonna start at the golf course. We're gonna test it out there. It's a direct, direct communication with, go with, with members. They opt in. We're not sending out junk, or junk text messages. My hope is that we expand this. It's only $79 a month and what we're hoping is that we can expand this. We'll start out there, we'll expand this over to Evans Plunge and eventually get to the point that we, if, if everything goes according to plan, we can do a resident or citizen feedback link through there so they can opt in for notices from us, so... But we're gonna start the golf course and see how this works for the next year and work from there.
Can I ask a clarifying question? When you said that monthly fee, the invoice is for an annual amount of $912, so we're not paying monthly, we'll be paying annually?
That is correct. That was my intent, was to pay annually.
Okay.
Not that it matters, I have used it before. It, it's, it's a good program, so...
We use it with our family business.
Yeah, okay, good.
All right. So we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a 12-month agreement with Trumpia for an opt-in texting service at a cost of $79 per month to be used at Southern Hills Golf Course.
Second. Discussion?
And Trump doesn't own this, just in case anybody's thinking of it.
Is that a vote for or against?
Um, my family uses it. That's the only reason I know that. That was one of the very first things they spit out.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item D, a possible motion discussion to approve a new job description.
Make a motion to approve a new job description for full-time police officer, training coordinator. Note, this is a new job description, but not an added position.
Second.
Discussion. Bill, can you give us a little rundown on this?
Yeah, this is, uh, as the, as the chief and the captain have, have talked about what they want their department to look like and how they want it to be developed, the need for a, a position other than just a patrol officer was discussed and what we wanna do is use this for a potential recruiting and retention tool. It's a tool in our toolbox that if we would have someone interested in coming to work for the police department, but quite frankly, they would like something on their resume other than patrol officer, and they had all of the right qualifications to where they could be the training coordinator for the department, this would be an opportunity to offer this position to that person. It would be within the same, uh, page grade as a patrol officer. Again, we're not adding a position. It's just a, a recruiting and retention tool.
And it fills a hole.
And it, and it would fill a huge hole. I think, what's the saying? The only thing more expensive than a trained officer is an untrained officer. And so if, if we could find the right candidate that is interested in us but would like something other than just officer, this would be an opportunity to maybe bring that person in. And the, the reality of the fact, or the reality that we live in is we are a small department. We are an entry-level department and with the exception of the folks that wanna be in Hot Springs for their entire lives, we are going to likely have a transient police force. This will hopefully reduce the, the turnover rate because if we can provide a really professional department to where it's not just, oh, get online, Dave, and do your training, or yeah, we'll... online, Dave, and do your training, or yeah, we'll say try, we'll go out and shoot some rounds next month if we got the time. But this person would put together an actual training program, a training matrix where identify what each officer should be getting, making sure they get it, do the hands-on training. We think we can really up the professionalism and the preparedness of our officers, which will also improve officer safety. So if we can find the right candidate, this will be a great tool for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item E, a possible motion discussion to approve the requested tax abatement.
I make a motion to approve the requested tax abatement, as presented and submitted by the County of Fall River Director of Equalization, the City of Hot Springs, $98.10, the State of South Dakota, DOT, $1,753.28, and $124.64, Val Hurst, and the amount of $2,468.71, Jimmy Dean Gozel, at $715.95, Alan and Michelle Stevens, $278.05. Second.
So we often see these each year. Misty, is there anything that you would like to add to what counsel has in front of them?
The City of Hot Springs-owned property was the Frohman property we purchased back. You approved a claim tonight in your current claims that was a portion of that. This is the other portion. After we purchased it in March, they exempted the taxes from then out. And if you remember, in our settlement agreement, we reduced the amount we paid him for the amount of taxes we would have to pay this year because we couldn't pay them when we closed, so.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Possible, um, new business item F, possible motion discussion to set a public hearing.
Make a motion to set a public hearing on 4/4/22 at 7:15 PM on alcoholic beverage license application from HSPLOFT Properties LLC for an on-sale retail restaurant liquor license to be used at 309 North River Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item G, possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreement 2022-7.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreement number 2022-7 with Joel Johnston, New Business at CES Code Enforcement Specialist LLC for code enforcement services for 2022.
Second.
Discussion?
Is this the same company that we've, we had last year?
Yes. Still have them.
Okay.
Aren't we under contract already till August?
He said he explained that when he came and spoke to you, that he does a yearly or an annual contract. So you're kind of behind the eight ball. He only bills for his time. The retainer fee is per year. So we used up our 2021 retainer. This is his 2022 agreement.
Okay.
And so we'll pay a new retainer and we'll have another agreement for next year.
And this will be just till August?
No, it'll be until we use up our retainer, stop agreeing. No, it's yearly. It goes through the end of the year.
But if we don't renew it in August, then do we get part of that back or?
No, we don't pay anything upfront. If we don't use the retainer for his services, which we did early on with his services the first time around, then yes, if we were at the end of the year and didn't want him anymore, we could get it back. But we used the retainer pretty quickly last time.
We only have him till August so far.
Well, that's what we thought, but it's confusing. At least, it was confusing to me.
We called him and talked to him.
It's actually an annual per calendar year, so that, that August is a, is a, is incorrect. It really needs to be a contract for the calendar year, or fiscal year for us.
So like to go from January to December each year?
As long as he's doing work for us that we want him to do.
Okay.
But he explained that the first time he came here to us, because it was already into the calendar year. So you have to keep that in, in mind, that at that time, we were already into the year. So that's why it kind of makes it a little confusing. But on a normal basis, he is in a calendar year.
So this just goes till December 31st, essentially?
Essentially, yes.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
Well, it's my understanding that there was 118 letters sent out originally, and we've had a 60% completion of those, um, issues. So we still have some work to do.
This is something that will never stop.
No.
Let's be honest with ourselves. This, this will never end. This is something that every community goes through. And, um, actually at 60%, we, we've done well.
Pretty good.
For the first year. I think we've done very well. And it also gives, um, code enforcement time to do. Beans Code Enforcement is only one job performance that, that department does. So it does open up time to get other things done that will bring in, uh, our tax base, which is doing permit, building permits, uh, building code enforcement and so on and so forth.
So I think it's money well spent.
I agree.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. New business item H, a possible motion discussion to approve travel training request.
Make a motion to approve a travel training request for Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Facility Director Chris Hansen to travel to Gillette, Wyoming to pick up materials needed for the facility upgrades not available locally.
Second.
Discussion? Jeff, you've talked with Chris about this.
This is just a side note. I mean, they're matching the existing tile and they, they couldn't get it anywhere in Rapid City. And it was either we paid the $600 or $800 to ship it from Wyoming or they go pick it up. But that's really all it is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item I, a possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from Police Chief Jen Winscott.
Make a motion to approve the travel training request from Police Chief Jen Winscott to attend the 2022 Sex Offender Registration Conference and the South Dakota Police Chiefs Conference in Deadwood, South Dakota from 4/17 to 4/21/22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item J, possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from the PD-SRO Officer.
I'll make a motion to approve the travel training request for the PD-SRO Officer Thomas McMillan to attend the NASRO Adolescent Mental Health Training for School Resource Officers in Deadwood, South Dakota from June 12th to June 14th of '22.
Second.
I'm going to mention something in my mayor's report about some orientation that the police officers and myself, um, received from the school about handle with care. And after that training, I'd had an opportunity to talk with the, um, grade school principal and the superintendent and asking them, uh, their initial thoughts on how the school resource officer position is going. And they said that it's going very well. He's, uh, the kids are becoming more comfortable with him. They're going up to talk to him. So it's, it's, it's going well so far. And as a part of the contract, the City of Hot Springs and the school agrees to split the costs of any training that the individual needs. Anxious to see that it's working out the way that both the school district and the City of Hot Springs hoped that the position would. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item K, a possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from library clerks.
Make a motion to approve travel training request for library clerks Heather Lee and Mary Hayes to attend the Jump Start to Summer Reading in Custer, South Dakota.
Second.
On 3/23/22.
Oops, second. Whoops. Discussion?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. All right, brings us to our committee reports. We deferred the, the last committee reports from the last council meeting. We ran kind of long, so, uh, we'll have.
It'll be long.
Two, two committee reports for those folks that, uh, all right. First one, administrative and finance, JR, Melanie?
Admin and Finance Committee minutes, um, met at 1:00 PM, March 7th, at the Mueller Center. Present were Mayor Bob Nelson, Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walden, co-chairs JR Huddleston and Melanie Wilson, and City Administrator Jeff Temple. Old business, Fall River Highway Fuel Repair System repairs in agreement awaiting the new city administrator and PD chief. We assigned that to Jeff Temple. ARPA suggested usage of $6,026,250. Additional $30,535 received reallocation with premium pay. We discussed water, wastewater infrastructure improvements. Wastewater, 225,000 digester lid. Wastewater, 100,000 clarifier arm. Water, 400,000 additional water line needed from Dale's Family Restaurant to Minnetka. The above items were discussed in advert, in advertisement by Black Hills Council to claim standard revenue loss of $10 million using entire allocation, which streamlines reporting requirements for allocated funds. Oversized propane tank at the maintenance shop, no further information received. Assigned to Seat Administrator Jeff Temple. Review of salary and wages. Increased longevity percentage, 0.5% to 1%. Increased part-time return bonus from 25 cents to 50 cents. Prepare for and participate in another wage study after the road project. Counsel has been given a briefing at the executive session. Review monthly finance reports Misty provided and spoke on her financial report. Review decreasing moving appropriations opinion from Rod Forton. Discussions continue with Rod Forton's opinion. May try it on the first appropriation. Consider proposal to allow on-premises alcohol sales at Southern Hills Golf Course that was tabled. Consider revised TOS and Wage Fund, Time of Service and Wage Fund formula for new golf courts operation manager recruitment. Jeff discussed a new golf course manager review, review and proposal. Walmart annual review. Misty discussed Walmart insurance coverage and brief history of the use. Jeff will be meeting with Walmart associate. The meeting ended at 2:50 PM. Our next meeting will be Monday, April 4th, 1:00 PM, newer Civic Center. JR Huddleston, co-chair.
Melanie, any comments?
No.
All right. Any questions?
I'm told on the propane tank that we tried to get a gauge and they said they wouldn't sell it to the city. That'd be a propane company. They went ahead and told Nelson's, go ahead and do it. We didn't go out for bids.
Was that a question? I, I didn't understand the question. We, we have not.
I thought you said the gauge wasn't broken.
Right.
That was the last thing I heard.
Well, we said the gauge wasn't broken and Billy told us last week that it is broken. It's not working correctly and that we have to now wait until the tank is empty so we can get, change out the, the gauge.
The question was, are we taking it out for bids or are we just ordering it?
It depends on the amount.
And when it goes empty, I would imagine how much time we have.
Right, I don't know.
We should probably start talking about it before it goes empty.
I have no idea what the approximate cost is. That'll decide how we, how we go with it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Airport advisory, Bill?
Airport advisory met on Friday, March 4th at 8:30 AM at the airport. The members present were Shane Miller, Petra Wilson, Don Connor. Employees present were Rick Reitenbach, Jeff Temple and Tracy Bastian. Uh, I was there and guests were Charlie Baker from KLJ Engineering and a citizen, Gary Tellkamp. Under old business, we talked about the, uh, Family Fun Day and it was decided that we'll continue planning, but we're going to change the location, uh, to an area south of the old hangar to avoid the tee hanger construction. Uh, the proposed date for that will be July, or I'm sorry, June 4th, which will be the first Saturday of June. Tee hanger update, we had a pre-construction meeting on March 2nd. Scheduled start is April 1st. One concern brought up is the building has been ordered, but shop drawings have not been approved. So that does put some risk to the contractor if those drawings are not approved. Uh, we continued our AWAS discussion. Uh, there's a negligible price difference between the AWAS 2 and the AWAS 3. The AWAS 3 is on the current capital improvement plan that is submitted to the FAA. The members discussed, uh, this is the next major item that will help our airport grow. Charlie Baker from KLJ provided a more accurate estimate of annual maintenance costs associated with the AWAS 3. Uh, and that current cost estimate is $5,250 per year. Based on normal grant sharing percentages, the City of Hot Springs share of an AWAS 3 purchase would be about $23,000. Hopefully the things will change and maybe the FAA will pay 100%, but this is about a $300,000 to $350,000 piece of equipment. Uh, under new business, our maintenance and operations update. February fuel sales, we sold 345 gallons of aviation fuel, had 20 flight operations and two balloon flights. Airport expenditures and funds were reviewed and we, uh, through February, we've expended 12.54% of our funds. Regarding terminal building maintenance, uh, Rick is looking to paint the inside of the building and replace the fluorescent lights with LEDs. Under mobile equipment maintenance, the city crew has been, was working on the snowplow. Really want to thank Adam and all of other, all those others in Billy's crew that have helped, uh, uh, work on that snowplow. And also Jason's folks that have helped with the mower repairs. We're getting a lot of equipment in service that we would have probably had to discard if it hadn't been for their expertise. Looking towards weed control and fertilizer around the hangars, we'll focus on weed control and avoid fertilizer. KLJ provided an update on the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act funds. Uh, KLJ has updated the capital improvement plan and will submit this to the FAA by April 1st, which is the deadline. Uh, that capital improvement plan includes the purchase of the AWAS 3 and the taxi lane extension. And what that will do is that will allow us more private, allow more private hangars to be built. Right now, once we build the 10-unit tee hanger, we've got room for about one more private hangar. And we've got lots of real estate, but we need some, uh, we need some more taxi lanes so we can get to those new hangars. Under items from the members, we'd like to take a look at adjusting the fee schedule to increase the car rental fee to $50 for a call-out without a fuel purchase. Right now, if there's a, uh, after-hours call-out, the charge is $30 and that doesn't even cover the cost of bringing Rick out to handle the transaction. A question came up, can the city list their cars with Turo? Question came up, can the city list their cars with Turo, which is a rental car app that people can use to privately rent, or to rent privately owned vehicles? And I guess that's something I need to bring to admin finance and see if we can enlist any of our courtesy cars on that app and turn them into rental cars. And the way his brow is throwing, I think I'm going to avoid that. Anyway, our next meeting will be April 7th, Thursday, April 7th, 8:30 at the airport, and our meeting adjourned at 9:45 AM. And thank you for your input on that issue, Misty.
Anything? Any questions for Bill or the finance officer? Thank you.
I have a question for Craig. You didn't happen to bring March 1st meeting stuff?
I did not.
Okay. I apologize.
All right. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
The meeting started at 7:00 PM. All members were present except one. The treasurer's report was presented and accepted. Fees associated with providing credit card payment services were reviewed, and a deputy secretary was authorized to research and implement the services of a different credit card payment vendor at a lesser rate to the district and is currently being charged. Landfill contractor management reported operations are going well. Discussion about opening one Saturday a month or possibly setting up a rubble box to assist with after-hour needs was held. No action was taken. The FMG reported there are a few minor items being done by barkers for Phase 2 sale closure and rubble site drainage projects. The 2021 annual water testing response will be submitted by FMG and DNR by the end of March 2022. The progress of combining the three recently matured CDs into one was discussed. There was no public comment. Next meeting will be May 12th at 7:00 PM at the Mueller Center. The meeting was adjourned at 7:39 PM.
Short meeting. Any questions for Larry?
On the potential of opening the landfill on a Saturday per month, is that going to be an active discussion? How was that actually received? Or was it like, let's drop this as soon, like a hot potato?
That was redirected to the city administrator.
So here's the status. It's on, it's on my shortlist of people to call. He has offered, I think, if I'm not misstating, he has offered to open one Saturday a month, maybe only a Saturday morning. I don't know exactly. What I have to work out with him is what it's going to cost us or not.
Okay.
So I'll call him and hopefully before the next meeting we'll have that taken care of.
Yes, it was mentioned on a Saturday morning.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just clarification for those listening, that's Edgemont Landfill.
Yes.
Not city.
All right. Thank you, Larry.
Yes, sir.
Historic Preservation, Debra?
Yes, we met on March 2nd at 5:00 PM. Present were Joe Muller, Brian Crawford, Pat Like, Steve Weena, Scott Sogi, Mike Summer, Deborah Johnston, Carrie Hagan. Guests were Luke Broyles and Sarah Bechtum. Under old business, Scott Sogi hasn't received the structural report for the Fowler Building located at 243 North River yet. This pertains to our visual inspection inside. Number two, Brian, motion to remove the words located in the Historic Preservation Ordinance, section 32.04B reside within the city and as we do not need commission members to reside only within the city limits to be on the board. And that was seconded and passed. Number three, an ad hoc committee consisting of Mike, Steve, and Joe was assembled to provide information for the new Historic Preservation Commission tab on the city website. They're, they kind of want to rewrite what's there and also offer up some potential links to put onto the page. So they're going to gather that information. Number four, noted that the road construction has begun and to follow both the webpage and Facebook page for updates and necessary information. Under new business, we received a certificate of appropriateness for 112 North Chicago and discussed the changes proposed. The property will get a facelift as well as an update inside. The owner was not present and we have questions. The improvements are noted and appreciated, and we do want the owners to move forward. This is at the intersection with the stoplight where wandering bison will be moving across the street. Pat motion that we table the request until discussion can be had, and that was seconded. Number two, Fall River Hospital requested to install a sign in the front area of the old library as this has become the site for their administrative offices. This is straight across from the post office. Pat motion to accept placement for either side of the sidewalk, seconded and carried. Discussion items, Sarah Bechtum gave an update on the window dressing project. Building owners are cooperating and the goal is to have items in place by mid-April to May 1st, and the meeting adjourned at 6:20 PM. The next one will be April 6th, 5:00 PM here at the Mueller Center, and everybody's welcome.
Any questions for Debra?
I have a question, Debra. You were talking about the makeup of the board and whether someone had to live in the city limits or not. Is that part of the suggested changes to the ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay. So council will have to approve those changes. I got the most recent version from Steve this morning.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and take a look at that. My recollection is the last time that I talked with you folks about the changes, you know, that you thought were appropriate. They certainly seem to be, you know, spot on with where we wanted to go, where you folks wanted to go with the ordinance. We'll just take a look at that one. And is it your opinion then that it's ready to go in front of council?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll get that in there.
We do need a map, a better map, as Steve pointed out in his message to you.
Yes.
Only maps of the historic district that we could find were fuzzy.
Yeah. And I talked with Scott about that this morning, and he and Carrie are working on trying to get a map that makes more sense and is clear. So what we need to do is try to get that in the council's info side of their packets for the next council meeting so that they can take a look at the suggested changes and...
The reason they decided on the not needing to reside in the city limits was there's a lot of people on our planning and zoning commission that aren't within the city limits. So, but they are very intelligent, committed people to Hot Springs.
I wasn't on council when that change was made to planning and zoning, but that's my understanding of why they did it. And every time I talk with Don Olsted, I tell him he has a lifetime appointment to planning and zoning.
Right. Yeah, we can't lose him.
When you have those kinds of skills, I don't, it's not in the city's best interest to exclude them simply because they don't live in the city, is my opinion, but that will be the council's call to make. And I think your recommendation is a good recommendation. But we'll get that in front of council so they can take a look at your proposed changes and ideally get on board with them. Any other questions? Thank you, Debra.
Thanks.
Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
Okay. Due to the scheduled two-week closure of the plunge for their annual deep cleaning, we did not have a face-to-face meeting this month. Our next meeting will be April 14th at 1:00 PM, or at noon. Per a phone call today, I, the plunge did open today, and I was also told that they will now be open on Wednesdays.
Good.
Step forward.
All right, yeah. Jeff, Jeff, I appreciate you working with them to...
No, I'm just, I'm, yeah, I'm going with the flow. But yes, I think it's a great thing. I really do. We're going to watch the numbers really close. What I would, I would just kind of mention on top of what Linda said is, we're looking at, well, never mind. I don't know if I should say, what I'm trying to say is, we want to look at programs that will be directed to the benefit of residents of Hot Springs, vice tourists. So we're reviewing that whole package and take a look at that. That's enough said. Enough said. But thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Parks Recreation, Larry?
This has been the March 2nd meeting, and this is much in my brain can remember, so bear with me. The meeting started, I had notes, but trust me. Meeting started at 2:00 PM. There were five committee members. City Administrator Jeff was there. Councilwoman Deb Johnson was there, and one member from the public were present. Recommendations of temporary tapes, taping of the courts were discussed for pickleball. The city administrator agreed to the recommendation. Cemetery update, in April, the water system will be charged. Info is on the website. Clean sweep of the cemetery graves will be conducted. Anything not looking new will be picked up, i.e. flowers, things like that. A sign to clean up after your dog will be posted at the cemetery. In the rec update for the month of March, all rec activities are being posted on Facebook and the city website. And she has a lot of good activities going on this month. The Butler Park softball field, all interested parties will be contacted and discussion will be involved to the best use of the existing open field by the library. The meeting adjourned at 3:00 PM. Next meeting will be April 6th at 2:00 PM at the Mueller Center. The public is invited.
Got a question for Larry.
Yes, sir.
I had a gentleman call me, it's with the Legion, and he was asking about the Legion ball field because they're trying to get a team together this year. Who takes care of that? The city does, don't they?
Yes.
They always have.
Yes, they always have.
And that's what I told him.
Yes, sir.
I've been in communication with him as well about how to establish a team, the documents, paperwork that's needed. Still yet to meet with those folks. They're not only interested in American Legion, but they're also looking at younger teams as well, as feeder teams coming to the American Legion. So we're working on that as well.
Mr. Thompson's the one that called me on the feet talking.
Yeah, I spoke with him. And Mr. Cruz as well.
All right. Thank you, Larry.
Yes, sir.
Planning and zoning, Debra?
Planning and zoning met March 16th at 7:00 PM at City Hall. Don Olsted presiding. Members present, Don Olsted, James Forbord, Allison Ritterbush, Dwight Weena. Staff present was Scott Sogi, Carrie Pyle, and myself. And guest present was Greg Gunwall. New business, number one was John Erickson at 23rd and Lincoln. He has a side yard, wants a side yard setback on 23rd and Lincoln. He wants to add onto the house, which will cross an interior lot line. Owners wants to reduce the setback on the side yard from 10 foot to 7 foot. The findings were that there is no hardship to validate it. The concern is for the safety and impact on the neighborhood. What is the fire hazard to the neighborhood? To build what he is proposing, he will need a variance for a side yard setback of 7 feet. Olsted suggests eliminating the remaining interior lot line. They talked about whether an ordinance change would be needed for this whole thing. We should look at the secondary building options. Overhangs are not a wall. Mr. Sogi will contact Mr. Erickson. Greg Gunwall on Doran Road, he has a standalone storage shed placement in an RA district. It was brought up property on the GIS screen and looked at this whole situation. The issue is with a large standalone shed, which is 14 by 32 feet on his property. He explained the shed is holding his tools for the house that is to be built on the lot. The discussion included position of the buildings on the lot and the interior lot lines. The discussion was that Mr. Gunwall needs a permit for the new house build, which will make his shed compliant, as it is an accessory building. And number three, city development, road paving requirements. The question was on how to address further development on the roads that have millings used as a temporary road surface. On streets that are platted, per ordinance, the developers required to pave roads before the final recording of the road is in place. They, the public, will continue to put down millings where the streets are not paved. Due to the DOT work on the new highway currently under construction, the city will have a lot of the millings available. How do we tell people to pave their roads if the city doesn't pave ours? A few examples were discussed, one of which was Meadowlark Drive, which is not paved per ordinance and was not built following the ROW or the proper survey located points. Under old business, update on Justine Griseus, 323 South 22nd Street. Number one, she needed clarification of easements and setbacks on property for an accessory building. And number two, the unfinished developing work in the ROW and the lot drainage to the neighbor's property that was part of the builder's responsibility per the Holt Homes RFP. Number two, additional dwelling units is an ongoing discussion regarding options. This has been lobbed back and forth between a couple committees. Currently, there are not any pending building permits pertaining to an ADU dwelling unit. There was conversation concerning the water service. The question remains, if it is an ADU, you should or shouldn't have a separate water meter for each dwelling. The city needs to draft an ADU water service plan and present it to the committees to make a decision. The city committees' recommendations need to be presented to the city council for discussion and approval. The city ordinance needs to clearly identify the ADU requirements concerning the ADU water service connecting to viable existing utilities. So there was a whole lot of discussion, you know, whether, you know, putting a bathroom in a garage needed its own separate. I mean, they were going that absurd, so. And, or people who build additional dwelling units on, in their back of their property and then later want to sell that off and subdivide the property, but you can't do that unless you have enough square footage. Each lot needs to have at least 6,000 square feet before you can do that. So if you would have an additional dwelling unit that's connected to the primary homes' utilities, that would be an issue. So those things are causing quite the conundrum between the committees. So those are the specifics that the P and Z wants the city to present to them. Those specific questions or recommendations and for their approval. Annexation is an ongoing discussion with reference to a three-mile limit in plating. Matching funds from the state for workforce housing. Guidance from a developer in Rapid City will be investigated by Mr. Sogi. And then the final was Cavell's discussion about city access to the water tank applying the easements. The city isn't involved because it's state land. The city could extend the road to the water tower. Resolution was that, that was passed in 2017 and how it needs to be addressed by the owner's attorneys. The meeting was adjourned at 8:32 PM. The next one is April 20th at 7:00 PM, City Hall.
Any questions for Debra?
The additional dwelling units, we have kicked this around at Public Works, and the feeling of Public Works is our ordinances with a very, very slight modification to be more specific about a dwelling, that any residence needs to have its own water meter and sewer service. It's currently in the ordinances. It's currently in the ordinances that way, and we don't, the committee doesn't see any significant reason to change that. And I don't see why P&amp;Z has to approve that. P&amp;Z needs to adhere to our ordinances, and that's the recommendation. So I'll get together with Don and see if he's looking for something different.
Okay. That way, otherwise, we all just need to scratch these off of our agendas if it's, if it's a done deal.
Well, we'll see what Don's thoughts are.
Okay.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Public Safety met on Thursday, March 3rd, 2022, at 2:00 PM here at the Mueller Center Conference Room. Attendees were Alderman Bill Lukens, Alderman JR Huddleston, Alderman Woman Linda Varville, Alderman Larry Pratt, Mayor Bob Nelson, Chief Jen Winscott, Fall River Emergency Manager Frank Maynard. Members of the public present: Howard Green, Black Hills Special Services Advisory Committee, Edward Carr, Lauren Van Cleve, Larry David, and Troy Getch. Highway 385 Reconstruction Project Representatives: John Van Beek, Ferber Engineering, Matt Ripentrop, South Dakota DOT, Seth Schull, Complete Concrete, and Scott Donnelly, Complete Concrete and Kurt Seacrest, City of Hot Springs. Emergency Response Agency Representatives were Fire Chief Darkoye, Trooper Brandon Allen, South Dakota Highway Patrol, Sheriff Bob Evans, Deputy Lyle Norton, Fall River SO Jackie Conlon, Director of Operations, Hot Springs Ambulance Service. Adoption of agenda, the agenda was published and pursued, except that the review of potential emergency response impacts associated with Highway 385 reconstruction period was moved to 3:00 PM. Communications from the public: Howard Green informed the Committee of Disability Awareness Training, an online law enforcement eight-hour course for South Dakota law enforcement personnel. Chief Winscott received that information and will add this course to the Police Department Training Matrix. Update from the Police Department: Chief Winscott provided an update of significant department activities. Included in the update were update on three vehicles hit by a DUI driver. The Explorer received 25 to 3,000, 2,500 to $3,000 in damage. Crown Vic, right front bumper and headlight. Dodge Pickup received damage to the left rear bumper and taillight. BMHS is now receiving animal control calls. Dispatch has been provided a copy of the contract. Public should call dispatch on emergency number 605-745-5155 for animal control issues. Information will be placed on the PD Facebook page. ACO Facebook page will be updated with current information. PD responded to 436 calls in February. Old Business, 21-20 Speed Camera Update. An update was provided to the committee regarding the information gathered regarding speed camera. The city attorney has provided information that South Dakota codified law does not allow interstate transfer of information associated with South Dakota citizens for the purpose of writing speeding tickets. The equipment we are looking at uses local storage of data, which would be downloaded by the PD. However, a vehicle license number and an identified individual are both needed to issue a citation. We'll continue to work with the vendor to determine if their equipment can provide clear enough photos for driver identification. The member of the public that originally brought this idea to the committee was present and offered assistance in grant writing for the equipment if it can be purchased or pursued. We want to thank him for his willingness to not only bring an issue to the committee, but to be a part of the solution. New Business: Chief Winscott provided a draft job description of training coordinator position within the PD. This position, if approved, would not add staff and would use the current pay scale for the officers. In addition to providing an important and necessary function within the department, the position serves as a recruitment and retention tool for, for the department without adding additional budget impacts to the city. As the position description is finalized, it will be placed on a future agenda for council consideration. The members of the council present asked questions for clarification and understanding and support adding this position designation to the department. As a final notice, we go forward and work to fill the two open positions in the department. The chief would only use this for a candidate or an incumbent that truly met the qualifications of the position. The committee reviewed a request for a memorandum of understanding received from the Veterans Affairs, Black Hills Healthcare System. MOU calls for support from the HSPD to support the VA Black Hills Healthcare System. Police Service One requested for a variety of circumstances. As there is not reciprocity of assistance and no conditions under which the HSPD could choose not to respond to requested assistance, the committee does not support signing such an agreement at this time. A request for handicap bus stop at Northwest Corner of Sixth and Jennings was made for by the representative of Black Hills Special Services Advocacy Committee. Multiple facilities have handicapped that access this area via vans and buses. Providing a designated area for these buses with an appropriate access to the sidewalk would allow buses to park without blocking normal traffic on both Sixth Street and Jennings and not interfere with the angle parking on Jennings. The sidewalk, sidewalk would need to be extended perpendicularly to the street to allow wheelchair access. The committee supports this request and asks for Public Works Committee to undertake the project. Larry David was present to discuss his request to the city to revise ordinance regarding medical cannabis, to allow cultivation of medical cannabis. Because of the agenda change for the Highway 385 reconstruction impacts on emergency response organizations, this discussion, the discussion time was very short. Mr. David did state that medical cannabis is a cash and cannabis intensity business. One of his main concerns is how to keep people safe when moving it around, and this is one of the reasons he desires a change in the city ordinance. A request for stop sign on 23rd Street at Jennings Avenue during highway construction period was held over for future consideration. John Van Beek and Matt Ripentrop with the road project provided an overview of the project to the emergency response representatives and shared incidents and concerns from previous projects. The emergency response representatives discussed concerns which were addressed by the project team. The emergency response representatives were informed of and invited to the weekly Tuesday 11:00 AM project review meetings that are held at the American Legion. We want to thank the project team as well as the emergency response leads for taking time for the discussion. We adjourned the meeting at 4:00 PM. Next meeting will be Thursday, April 7th, 2:00 PM, Mueller Center Conference Room. Everybody's welcome.
And just one addition regarding that April 7th meeting. I've asked, and I believe Misty has published a notice of quorum.
We will publish.
So one of the group from Larry David's group, he won't be able to attend, but one of his group will be there, and they want to talk to council about their issues. And so since public safety was given that task to listen to those requests and, and hear them out a little more, we've put out a notice of quorum, so any council member that wants to attend that meeting can do so without being asked to leave if you're number five through the door. So we'll probably start the discussion with the, regarding medical cannabis cultivation about 2:30. So I just wanted to let the council members know that you're, you're all welcome to attend that meeting.
April 7th.
April 7th, Mueller Center Conference Room.
Okay.
2:00 PM for the entire joyous occasion.
Any questions, council? Thank you, JR. Public Works, Dave, Craig?
Pardon me, but I'm gonna coincide March 1st meeting with March 15th meeting. All meetings are, are held here at the Mueller Center at 1:00, at 1:00 PM. Those present were Craig Romi, myself, Deb Johnson, Tracy Bastian, Jeff Temple, Billy Morrow, Carrie Pyle, and Mayor Bob Nelson. New Business, I will let you know which, on the 1st and the 15th, because some of these coincide together. New Business, which was brought up only on the 15th. Loading Zone, we're gonna put a loading zone, mark off a loading zone on Jennings Avenue right next to the bridge. There'll be a 70-foot load zone. That way, during the project, when we get to a certain point, that any deliveries that are coming into town to restaurants and so forth can park there without impeding any of the traffic. And then the second one was school street stop sign. This is just, we're just getting into that. We're not quite all the way there. Still waiting for information and some input from the, the city and the state. Excuse me. Carrie Pyle, a resident here in town, has brought forth on March 1st and also on March 15th meeting, a public, public space for gardening is what we're, what we're talking about. On the 1st, she brought the idea to us with just interest from parties that she's been discussing with, and we told her as the committee that we were interested, would have no problem with working with them if they wanted to pursue this. On the 15th, she came back to us with some certain properties that they have in mind, and with those properties, one of them was labeled as a FEMA property, a flood zone property. We have not kiboshed any of this, but we told her that it would be needed for us to know exactly what is legally acceptable for this, and so she's doing research, and this will come back to us again. Street Maintenance Department. Trimming trees in alleys on University Avenue is going on now. This was also discussed on the 1st and the 15th. That is presently going on now, and they are up in that area, and it is a hit and miss thing depending on what projects are going on and where manpower can be used. Battle Mountain Road needs billings. This has been on, you probably heard me say this for the last three months, but it's there, so we keep, keep this in mind, and it is on a repair list. On Battle Mountain Road needs the millings, and it is scheduled, and it has been scheduled for the last six months to, to happen in June of '22. On the 15th, we had an update on drainage improvement and scheduling costs and materials for Valley View Drive. This is, we're still compiling this information. That also was discussed on the 1st, but we are, like I said, still compiling costs and materials and manpower and scheduling also. We have number four on, on street maintenance, and this was just an informational thing on the burning of the brush piles. We had no, no, as far as the city's burning, we had no calls in, no, no complaints from anybody that we have noted either at the City Hall or by dispatch. So as far as that went, that was a very nice, clean burn for the city. But there was a few folks that were calling me personally to find out if the piles caught fire again. That was somebody on the other side of the hill outside of town. That flooded pretty much most of town with smoke. That had nothing to do with the city folks. LP Tank at the street shop was discussed, as you heard earlier in the conversation. We're talking about the gauges. On the 15th and the 1st, this was a topic. On the 15th, it was, I asked our supervisor, Billy Morrow, down at the MRF, to personally check himself what the issue is with the, with the gauge and to make sure everybody understands how to use a proper gauge. But as you heard from Craig earlier, we had to set it up where it went through a propane company distributor, so that has been kind of put on the back burner until all that gets kind of filtered out. Utilities Department, wastewater treatment improvements. The clarifier, the clarifier's work is ongoing, is getting installed. At this point, it could be all installed, and Jeff, you can correct me on that if that is, that is wrong.
95% finished.
Yes, okay, thank you. And the other part of the wastewater treatment, we are waiting for, the lid is here. We've been waiting for that for quite a few months, but the lid for the, or the top or the ceiling, however you want to look at it, is here, and we are waiting on bids for it to be put together and in place. Moving on to code enforcement, as you heard us talk earlier, and renew the, the agreement we have with code enforcement specialties. Their survey, they redid their survey. There will be more letters going out, and I do believe the letters have gone out as of now, have been sent out. So if you are on the receiving end of that, their information is right on the letter. You don't have to call the city. You will call the specialists yourself, and you will talk directly with them. On the 1st and the 15th, 243 North River Street, Fowler Crom Building, we were waiting on engineer's report, and the day of this meeting, it was supposed to arrive to the city at about a quarter to 3:00. So during the meeting, we did not receive it, but I'm sure that, that came in by the following morning. Colebrook Street Avenue and signage, that was sparsely discussed because we are looking at Wayfair signage. I myself brought up the idea of, is it possible for the signage that we do need to replace that is presently out right now, can we coincide the purchase of both those signs, both those types of signs at one time and roll it into a package? But it doesn't sound like that is going to be possible. Let's see. We also been working on the food truck park. That's kind of the name it got labeled with. We are coming up with a, with a plan for it and some updates, and we are still working on that, and we have to take a look at the road that's just above right behind. And just to clarify, this is where the Red Shed was actually selling food last year, right there at the faraway intersection. We are looking at what needs to be repaired about, at the back wall of that, and we are still putting together materials list, possible costs, and where we can go from there. Old Business, lease and royalty agreement with Simon's Materials on piece of property that's up there that actually has no entry point for the private individual. You would have to go through the pit, through their property, on to that. At this point in time, we are not looking at going after that right now until we get into this project this year, and that'll probably be towards the end of this year that we'd probably be looking at that. Contracted city snow removal. We are working and do now have a kind of a draft that we have here. This is trying to get private business to work alongside with city employees that do snow removal, just due to the fact of getting everybody coincided, because if the city comes through and plows, and then you have your private contractor come through and plow and push the snow out into the road, it kind of defeats the purpose of both parties. So we're trying to get that kind of work together, and we're going through the draft as, as we speak now. See, Summit Road, that was just what we was just talking about earlier, about the food truck park. That, that is what that is, Summit Road. Unfortunately, it keeps being put down on our, on our sheet, our worksheet as Somerset Street, which we do have, I believe, but that's not it. So once that gets figured out, we'll, we'll be okay. Wayfinding signage, I'm not gonna get into that because we've got into that earlier. Most of you have already heard that. Most of you have already heard that, that part, and we are just barely getting into that right now. Gravel behind the gravel alley at north of police station. That was actually done a week and a half ago, and me and the mayor walked it the day they were spreading it out. And as as of the day of of the March fifteenth meeting, that was a good job. We will go back later after it has been driven on and everything else, because we did roll it out and everything. But we got to get some more compaction on it, and we'll probably go back through, put some clean rock over the top in thin areas. Community garden, we discussed that already. Bump outs, as far as old business bump outs that are adjacent to Big Bats and along Main Street, those are projects that are into works, as we all know, as you're coming into town. We got to run a water line from one side of the street to the other. And so we're working on what's going to work with the contractors and the DOT, timing-wise, to get that done, because we don't really want to have a seam or two pieces of pipe coming together right in the middle of the highway. So that that is just a work in progress right there. Is this something that's been on our schedule for months? DOT railing and sidewalk addition? We are still waiting on the state and the DOT and all those that are privy to that, which the city really is not, for them to make up their minds what they're doing there. And that's it, that's pretty much it. Most of the things that we have just discussed were on the March first meeting and also on the fifteenth, and you will probably hear some of those on our next meeting also. And our next meeting will be on April the fourth at 1:00 P. M. here at the Mueller Center, and anybody in the community is welcome to come.
Craig, you want to add anything?
I don't have enough time, all the times were.
Well, that was two, two meetings worth.
Any questions for David, Craig? Some for me. You were, you were talking about the Jennings loading zone?
Yes.
And that loading zone is going to be on River Street between Jennings Avenue and University Avenue?
Clarification, thank you.
It was, it was a question, not a statement.
Well, yes, you are correct, yes.
Okay.
I thank you for the clarification on that.
And so I'll, okay. Then the letters, you'd asked about those, no, those haven't gone out yet.
Okay.
Scott wants to get some notices in the paper for people to expect those notices in the mail.
Okay.
I wrote down food park, but I've forgotten what I wanted to say about it. To the bump outs for Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, we had talked to you folks, you know, about getting water to that area around Big Bats. Whether we use it in the future or not, it's important to have it there and have it available. So Tracy has been working with the contractor to figure out when the city crews will have access to that area to make sure that we get water to that. You've been asking for that, and we're doing everything we can to make sure you get it. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Southern Hills Golf Course, Jeff?
Oh, I guess that's me. Sorry. So I don't have minutes because the last meeting was this evening at six, so I left before there were any minutes done. I will tell you that right now, the pending an appointment to the committee, Gail, I can't say her last name. What's Gail's last name, Sprent?
Sprent.
Thank you. Anyway, she's the acting chair right now, pending an appointment on somebody from council. So she is the chair of that committee right now. Again, tonight's meeting was off kilter for some reason, I don't remember why. The next, they're back to the second Monday of each month, starting on the eleventh of April, and those are meetings that are six P. M. at the golf course. Tonight, the discussion was around the appointment of the new, the selection of the new golf operations manager, PJ Wetzel. Based on your approval tonight, he'll be in place tomorrow, and then he'll have a little bit of a turnover with Kathy before she gets out of here. More to come on that, I guess. The biggest challenge right now out there, well, tonight, they were briefed on, Tracy Bastian briefed them on the repair of the wall around the golf clubhouse. And so they, I left during the middle of that briefing to come here, but they, so they bring up, brought up to speed on that. Biggest challenge right now is staffing and for non-management positions at the golf course, but like everyone, where everybody else, so. I'm going to go ahead and roll into with with Misty's permission, the city administrator's report, because it's all tied together. Dave's already mentioned the food court park. That will be in place and ready to go on the eighteenth of April. We've, we announced that in the paper. We've got at least, at least an applicant now. If we have more than four, we'll go to a lottery system out there for that. But we should be, hopefully open the week of the eighteenth out there for, in the food court, food court park. Just a reminder, we've got no water tonight or tomorrow morning, so we may go home and take a shower tonight, but just a reminder. One other thing I wanted to mention was the homepage, the administrator for the homepage now is, let me rephrase that. Administration for our homepage and our Facebook page is being done in our office in City Hall. Carrie is the point of contact for that, and so she's.
She does Facebook.
Yeah. So anyway, that's been moved back over from the Chamber of Commerce now that we have somebody who understands technology, not me. Last but not least, on the note regarding the bump outs, I do have a meeting tomorrow with Keep, Keep Hot Springs Beautiful to discuss the details of what they want, we have mine, what they have mine, we'll come up with a solution. We have some ideas that we're trying to throw out there to them to keep the maintenance down. One other thing was, we are going to start, I hope, by the first of next week on the river corridor, the north side, we met today, walk back through it. So our guys, hopefully will be out there on Monday, getting ready to go on that and get the corridor cleaned up on the north side, which will take us up at least to the end of where the new sidewalk will be, or suspended sidewalk will be. And that's all I've got.
What, can I ask you what time that meeting is with Keep Hot Springs Beautiful?
I am meeting her tomorrow morning at nine. Would you like to come join us for coffee?
Well, I, I would have, but I got to go see the eye doctor.
Oh, okay, no, well, I'll, I'll give, I'll tell you how it goes.
Okay.
It's actually, anybody who wants to attend is certainly welcome to. It's an informal meeting at Wandering Bison for coffee, so we're just going to talk about that.
Okay.
At that time of morning, I got to have coffee.
Yeah, I want to go to the nine o'clock meeting.
I actually would have liked to have gone, but I do have, I got to go see the eye.
Okay, great. She's just got back in town, so I think what, once we, once we kind of sort out what they have in mind, and I will say this, and we'll present it back to council, but one thing that we're, we're looking at the, the old clock that we have now, and they came out of the, where's the Weshoke, I guess?
Yes.
We're looking at whether that could be incorporated into some kind of a design there at the, at the entryway to the city, so.
That'd be, that'd be wonderful, and I think me and Craig have kind of gone through that and taken a look at it prior to you seeing it, and we kind of agree that that would be an enhancement.
Be beautiful, isn't it?
And that also, and I know Craig is a big on the fountain, and those are things that'd be hashed out, but we both agree that that would be a good addition to our community.
That's good. I think as soon as we work, maybe with them a couple of times, we'll sort out, we, we have plenty of time, to be honest, but, but we need to sort out who's doing what and where and how and how much, so.
We have a lot of sandstone, too, that we could integrate.
Now, what I'm trying to do with them, just so you know, is I'm trying to move them less, with less vegetation that requires maintenance and more towards the sandstone and the, the desert look without making it look ugly. And I'm not an expert at that, so I can make it look ugly, I can make it look pretty.
And when did you say you were going to be walking the river?
We did that today.
Oh, you did that today.
We walked the river today.
Okay.
So with waiters and everything.
Dave offered to be at your next meeting.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, because I, we are in support of your guys' ideas.
Absolutely.
And yeah, want, want to be there, want to be there through the whole thing with you, so.
Any questions for Jeff? The, the question of sandstone was brought up, and I made a commitment to Beth when she was president of the group, am I saying that correctly? That, yes, the city will work with you to find the right stones for your, your ideas. And we talked a little bit about it today, that when we walk the river, we also need to identify stones that we're going to use for the suspended sidewalk. So we want to get out and mark those out and make sure we get those reserved. Jeff had also talked about an appointment to the golf course committee. Don't everyone fight over the appointment, but who would like to step up and take that one?
I nominate Bob Nelson.
It needs to be a council member, not the mayor.
So.
Like I said, I still, I still.
Well, I'll, I'll reserve my right to delegate. All right, so we'll talk with Jeff about it.
Misty's looking pretty happy over there.
I got a golf course operations manager, I'm a happy camper, believe me.
Okay. Misty, finance officer report.
I have the report from the March seventh meeting. The financial reports are through the end of February. They're the standard for reports you're used to seeing. I do like to print the profit and loss summary by fund in color, so you see the red, because it's important to remember that we keep a reserve balance, because the first months in the year are difficult for many of our funds for operation. I provided you an update on the 2021 annual report. I am down to, I did get the Gatsby sixty-eight calculations today. I did not enter them because I have too many questions still for the auditors before I post them, but I am down to the capital asset changes, additions, removals, and the recording of depreciation expenses, my last step before I can start the actual preparation of the annual report that will be presented and published in the Star. Once again, we'll work with Cadel Thorstensen to complete the required annual audit report. Tracy Hanson and Brittany Gray's are our main points of contacts. We've already begun sharing reports through an established share file, and audit field work will begin May ninth, just shortly after the presentation of the annual report to the council. Updated you on the 2022 municipal election currently, nominating petitions are circulating. The deadline for filing is March twenty-ninth at 5:00 P. M. If you or anyone you know has any questions, please ask. I am pleasantly surprised with the amount of people inquiring at City Hall, excuse me, and through email about the election process this time around. I currently have eleven RSVPs for the 2021 S D M L District Nine meeting, and our time is close to RSVP, but I'm happy to see that number grew from the time I gave you your report from four to eleven. These are great meetings, as all S D M L meetings are, and so I think you'll enjoy it if you haven't been there before. And those of you that have been there before, I think that we'll have a very interesting legislative update from Yvonne. As you know, the first payment for the first half or tranche of our C L F R F Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund allocations was received in September of 2021. The second payment is expected at the end of August 2023. We, as a city, received notification that allocations to cities that declined funding or we were non-responsive were reallocated by the state, and they sent proportionate payments to registered cities. So we received an additional first tranche payment of thirty-five, three thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. We deposited those dollars with the first tranche in the wastewater fund for future use. Expenditures of these funds must follow the same treasury guidance for allowable expenses. I did, at the admin finance meeting, review a recommendation that was received from the Black Hills Council of Local Government to claim the standard revenue loss, which is up to ten million. That was new in the last release of the rules, that standard revenue loss for cities that had under ten million be like a standard deduction you could file on your tax returns. And then we can use the entire allocation to reimburse salaries, which removes any requirement for grant funding for the dollars. Since we've already done that, we know that the process for submitting and requesting approval for that is simpler, so we're looking into that as an option. At the last council meeting, the last council meeting I gave you an update at, not the last council meeting, I reviewed a number of upcoming city projects and the related estimated costs associated. I hope you all took some time to reflect on that reporting and those estimated expenses. It's true that the projects we're involved in and those we're undertaking on our own over the next couple of years are significant in scope and cost. The variables and unknowns will undoubtedly continue to surprise and challenge us. A previous mayor referred to this construction period as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Hot Springs, and with council's approval encouraged us to lean in to take advantage of the opportunity to revive our area. It's taken years and countless decisions, discussions, meetings, publications, hearings, emails, estimates, votes, et cetera, to get where we're at now, and there's literally no turning back. I'm expecting and projecting that the next couple of years will be a challenge for the city, both operationally and financially. With that being said, I would like to reiterate that hope is not a recognized financial strategy. As voting council members, I urge you to commit to considering long-term financial ability in all decisions made related to ongoing, increasing, unbudgeted, unfunded additional projects or expenditures during this period, since we've already committed to so much. As always, my door is always open, and I'm willing to help answer any financial questions you may have to the best of my ability. Thank you for your attention and commitment to the city of Hot Springs and its citizens. We truly couldn't do it without you.
Any questions for Misty? Thank you, Misty. All right. On Tuesday, March fifteenth, all the police officers and I attended a Handle with Care orientation organized by Jackie Schneers, the Special Services Director for the Hot Springs School District. Handle with Care is intended to provide enhanced awareness about why a student may suddenly be struggling in school. If a law enforcement officer encounters a child during a call, that child's name and the three words, Handle with Care, are forwarded to the school child care agency before the school bell rings the next day. The school can then implement individual, class, and whole school trauma sensitivity curricula so that potentially traumatized children are handled with care. Our police officers will be one of many organizations that will receive additional in-depth training in the near future, and I want to thank Jackie for including the city of Hot Springs in the Handle with Care program. On Saturday evening, March nineteenth, Jeff and I attended the Chamber of Commerce Eighty-Second Annual Awards Dinner. I want to thank Olivia Mears, the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, and her staff and all the sponsors that made this dinner so successful. I also want to congratulate the following award winners for their contributions to the city of Hot Springs. The Agribusiness Memorial Scholarship went to Megan Sanders. Retail Business of the Year is Ace Hardware. Service Business of the Year is Fall River County Herald. Hospitality Business of the Year, the Mammoth Site. Friend of the Chamber, Burkhold and Farrell Family and Friends. Community Pride, Southern Hills Ballooning Association. Excellence in Digital Media, Silk Road Experience. Employer of the Year, First Interstate Bank. Directors Award, Tammy Schrum. Joyce Farrell Youth Volunteer of the Year, Karina Navatney. And our Citizen of the Year is Kay Burkhold. And I finally want to mention, the Highway three eighty-five reconstruction project through Hot Springs has finally begun. Last week, road work began in the vicinity of Taco John's, and this week, work will begin on Jennings Avenue between the post office and the police department. The public can keep up on the progress of the project by going to hot springsreconstruction.com. Ferber Engineer updates the weekly website to ensure everyone knows where the contractors will be working for that week. And the website also provides a phone number for people to call if they have questions. You have any questions for me? What's it looking at me?
I think Craig is raising his hand to volunteer for the golf course.
Who did?
Craig, I thought I saw him raise his hand, I mean, I'm wrong.
Well, he's.
I do have comments.
He's smiling with excitement, so I'll go ahead and do that.
I have a comment first. It's, everybody that's listening in paper might put this in, there is a stop sign coming off of the truck bypass going towards Maverick Junction or Coffee Cup. I don't know how many times I've seen cars just because they're used to the, the yield sign, and they're not stopping. They need to really look, because there's going to be an accident there if they don't.
So when they're coming down the truck bypass and making a left turn?
Right turn.
Or right turn.
There's a stop sign.
Okay, oh, so that was replaced by stop sign?
During construction.
Since the, during.
No.
Okay, oh, so that was replaced by stop sign since the, during, I've avoided that area, so I didn't know that.
I make a motion with Derek.
We have an executive session though.
No.
No, not today.
No.
It was listed, but we didn't have any. I'm sorry, the second? Thank you.
If you want one, you can make a motion. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Well.